Call to order, the meeting of the Verona Common Council meeting for Monday, November 18th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Gaskell.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
Alder Person Journey is absent and excused.
Excellent, we have a quorum. Next we will move on to public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. All right, not seeing anyone. With that, we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the minutes from the November 11th, 2019 Common Council meeting.
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Touche, I think. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the November 11th, 2019 Common Council meeting say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Under item six, Mayor's Business, I don't have anything other than I think I adjusted my mic wrong again. We'll move on to item seven, which is announcements. Does anyone have any announcements?
I have a couple.
Oh, Alder Cole.
First thing, I just want to announce that alternate side parking for the winter starts on the 20th, so it starts on Wednesday. And second thing, I've been asked to remind people to make sure you put away like basketball hoops and portable play equipment that might be hanging out in cul-de-sacs around the sides of the streets. That way, when DPW comes to plow, they aren't running into things like that.
Good advice. Any other announcements? Seeing none. With that, we'll move on to the Administrator's Report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you, we have a few items tonight. First one is, the mayor and I will be giving a presentation tomorrow morning at 7:30 AM at the Halliday Express. It is the State of the City presentation to the chamber. Anyone is, the council is welcome and invited to attend that if you choose to. There is a Parks Commission meeting on November 20th, CDA meeting on November 21st, Plan Commission is December 2nd. We do have one public hearing as part of that, which is a renewal of the Sherr Creek Commons PIP. And then we have one council meeting in December, which is December 16th. It's the third Monday of the month. Fall leaf pickup, they'll continue to do their best to pick up leaves, especially with the weather and the snow, but the last pickup day will be Friday, November 22nd. It's been a challenging year for this, obviously with the snow, but the last pickup will be this Friday. People can continue to drop off their leaves at the Public Works Building and also will continue year-round brush collection like we always do. The TIFx, it has gone through the Assembly and it's actually been passed and adopted. We are still waiting on the governor's signature. What we're hearing today is that he will sign it most likely on Wednesday or Thursday of this week. Staff has been preparing to send out checks to property owners impacted by the error, and those will be sent out to the persons who made the payment, the 2018 payments. We'll sign those as soon as we can. We'll be issuing checks, but we'll not be issuing checks for less than $10. So if someone has owed a refund of less than $10, we won't send the check out, but they can come to City Hall and request that. We would then issue them a check. It's more of a cost issue at that point, but there'll be over 4,000 letters that'll be going out here in the coming weeks. So those will be hitting the mail pretty quickly. Finally, I know Mitch sent down an email on this, but we have kind of restarted the fire chief recruitment, so that has been reposted, and the deadline on that is coming up shortly. Would I be happy to answer any questions from the council?
Questions on the Administrator's Report? Seeing none. We will move on to 8A, which is the Election Day Contingency Plan and Security Update. Clerk Clark.
So first of all, nomination papers for local seats, Alder Person Mayor and Municipal Judge are available in the clerk's office now. You may begin circulating papers December 1st, and they need to be returned to me by January 7th at 5:00 PM. If you decide that you are a current seat holder and you decide you do not want to run again, I would need a declaration of non-candidacy by December 27th at 5:00 PM. The primary is February 18th, and the spring election and presidential preference election is April 7th. So that's when, April 7th is when the local elections would take place. So regarding the Election Contingency Plan, I think I'll just read from this first page to kind of explain what it's about and what it's for. We all know what a contingency plan is, so if something should happen on Election Day, it tells us what we could do to continue our election as it has been scheduled. So it's important for our citizens that we take steps to address potential interruptions to the election process. We should also provide safety for election inspectors and voters and ensure the integrity of the polling site. This plan is to serve as a contingency plan for the city of Verona in the event of a natural or man-made event on Election Day. It in no way protects against such activity, but gives guidelines on dealing with potential interruptions. It further provides guidance to the city clerk should they need to take action. So we have a contingency plan in place. This is an updated contingency plan suggested by the Wisconsin Elections Commission as part of their gearing up for this new election cycle, 2020 election cycle, and the presidential election. As we all know, in 2016, there were some cybersecurity risks, and Wisconsin was one of the states that was targeted. However, they were not able to get into our system at all, and we have some very stringent processes and procedures in place in the state of Wisconsin. We're in very good shape here in Wisconsin as compared to a lot of the rest of the country. Just a couple things in the contingency plan that we added since the last one. One thing is active shooter, what we should do in the case of an active shooter. We did have some training by Officer Atkins for our election inspectors, and those that hadn't had it through their workplace, or through the senior center, or at the library, or some other place, most of them came in and took part in that. So we were very glad to have that available for them. Medical emergencies were also added. Threatening phone calls, bomb threats, suspicious objects, in other words, if you see something, say something, is the training there. Workplace violence was added. And what should happen in the case of a change of venue. The most important thing there is that the police department would be called upon to make sure that we keep the integrity of the election. So a police officer would always have their eyes on the tabulator, on the ballots, whether voted or not voted. So that's the most important thing. I guess that's it for the actual contingency plan. Chief Coughlin has seen it, the city attorney has seen it, the city administrator have all seen it, and I haven't gotten any negative remarks from them, so I'm assuming that they all feel it's in good shape. The other thing that we're doing now is, again, the Wisconsin Elections Commission is really gearing up, wanting to make sure that our elections are secure and that we can guarantee the integrity of our elections. So what they've asked is for all communities and all election inspectors to have some security training. We'll be doing that here. Also, Kayla and I and three of our chief inspectors went to Dane County tabletop exercises for security, Election Day security and cybersecurity, in which we were given various scenarios as to what might happen on Election Day. They called it the worst election day ever. And at each tabletop, there were different things going on. So we had flooding, we had snowstorms, we had tornadoes warnings, we had a car come through the front window, just about anything you could think of, just strange people walking around, poll watchers causing problems. And who do you talk to, who do you go to first to get through that day? What would happen if you had to change venues? So our election inspectors, I'm very proud of the fact that our election inspectors are very well trained. They have training before each election, they have the security training, and I think that we're in really good shape that way. They seem to know what they need to do, and they do it well. We have a great team. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the council? All right. Well, thank you for that update. Next, we'll move on to item nine, which is Engineer's Report.
Hi there, I'm Jess Bellmeyer. I'm sitting in for Carla tonight. She had jury duty. So happy to be here, thanks for having me. I think I speak for everyone when I say hallelujah, the roads are open. First off, the Howie M reconstruction. Punch list items have been prepared and provided to the contractor prior to the winter shutdown. They're going to finish those final punch list items in the spring of next year. Second project is the Highway 18-151 going up to Madison. All of those mainline lanes on Verona Road are fully open up to the Belt Line as of last week. They'll complete the work on Highway PD next summer. Third project is County PD from Woods Road to County Highway M. The contractors continuing work on Stage Two as well as some work in Stage Three. Stage Two mainline paving occurred Saturday, November 9th. More Stage Two temporary paving is scheduled Thursday, November 14th, so last week. The final traffic adjustment of the season is scheduled after temporary paving is completed. The MG&E utility joint trench is currently being installed and progressing east to west along the project corridor. Fourth project is the Verona Area High School traffic improvements. The winter shutdown punch list items are being addressed, which includes paving on West Verona Avenue and West End Circle. The structures will continue throughout the winter. Traffic control will be reduced along West Verona Avenue during the winter to improve visibility and winter road maintenance activities. And then last, I'll talk about the Well 6 pumping station construction. The plumbing pipe work has been installed for the floor drains, and the foundation has been backfilled. Work on the sanitary sewer was delayed due to snow and cold during the beginning of the week of November 11th to 14th. It's now projected that the sanitary sewer work will be completed during the week of November 18th to 22nd. That's all I've got.
Any questions on the Engineer's Report? Seeing none. We will move on to item 10, which is Committee Reports. First up, we have Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion regarding the payment of the bills in the amount of $918,991.12.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp?
Sure, for the sake of discussion, this month, there's a number of payments. First, payments for the administrative credit card for the city, which include legal fees, the Gordon-Flesh Company and Waste Management, in the amount of $147,140.26. There's also a payment for Well 6 in the amount of $260,626.81, and a payment for the County Highway M project in the amount of $386,13.47.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on paying the bills? Seeing none. All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Kemp.
Yes, next is the public hearing on the 2020 City of Verona budget.
A motion to go into the public hearing would be in order.
I will make a motion to open the public hearing on the 2020 City of Verona budget.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are in the public hearing at 7:14 PM. Like five seconds maybe? I mean, if there were people in the audience, I would wait longer. Seeing... All right. Seeing only city staff in the audience and nobody rushing up to the podium, a motion to close the public hearing would be in order. Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the public hearing is closed at 7:14 PM. Alder Kemp.
Yeah, next, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to the council approving Resolution Number R-19-054 approving the 2020 City of Verona budget.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp?
Sure, first, just, I wanted to take just a moment. This was a difficult process that was started, you know, last summer. I wanted to take a moment to thank, first of all, all of the department heads and all the work that they did in putting together their budgets. Of course, all of the city staff here that has worked with the Finance Committee in putting that together. And then, of course, the Finance Committee. It's been a difficult process, given the situation that we're in, but this is a good budget. I think it's one that's good for the city of Verona. And moving forward, we're going to continue to work to better our financial situation. So moving on, some of the highlights that I wanted to point out in the budget itself. The proposed 2020 budget includes a 1.66 increase in the amount of levy collected, which provides a budget increase of $228,051 increase from the 2019 budget. Some of the basic highlights are the budget maintains all city service levels. It funds a third ambulance crew for the Fitch Verona EMS in 2020. It supports the park improvements. It also supports the roof replacement at the old library, funds the additional elections in 2020, funds the design of the new Public Works facility, and provides a 2% cost of living increase to non-represented employees.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the budget? I'll just echo Alder Kemp's thank you to staff. I know this was a tough budget, and I'm really appreciative of the work that staff did. I think they ended up in pretty good shape, all things considered, and it's another step on the road to fiscal sustainability. Any other questions or comments on the budget? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-054 approving the 2020 City of Verona budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion approving Resolution Number R-19-055 approving the levy of property taxes for city purposes.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey. Alder Kemp?
Again, the total levy for the 2020 is $13,949,140. So again, some of the highlights that jump out to me particularly, there's a negative 2.23 tax decrease, the city portion of a tax rate of $1,576.43 on a house valued at $272,000, which is a decrease of $35.99, and the city portion of tax rate of $2,318.28 on a $400,000 house is a decrease of $52.92.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on Resolution Number 19-055? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-055 approving the levy of the property taxes for city purposes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from Finance?
Nothing further, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10B Personnel Committee. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve amendments to the City Administrative Policy Number 4 dash, is there something else? Just four, okay.
Four.
Personnel policy regarding uniforms and equipment.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole, I think. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. The proposed amendments include the establishment of eligibility requirements, including the identification of items that qualify for reimbursement and limits the amount of reimbursement each employee may be eligible to receive. Eligibility requirements are specific to each department. Other amendments include the creation of a process for employees to request reimbursement of funds and clarification on which clothing items are considered taxable.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment to City Administrative Policy Number 4 Personnel Policy Regarding Uniforms and Equipment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from Personnel? Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 11, New Business. First up, we have a discussion and possible action regarding an intergovernmental agreement to continue a police school liaison officer program. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. In your packet, we had the proposed agreement, then we also had a red line agreement that has the changes in it. But this agreement would extend the operation of a police school liaison officer in the high school for a one-year period beginning July 1st, 2019. So we're currently operating without a contract or agreement, but this would put that, we'd actually, if this is adopted, we'd have an agreement in place now until June 30th of 2020. Changes to this agreement from the past year include modifications to the purpose language encouraging more communication and reporting of incidences. And that language, the modifications were requested by city staff as part of the conversations with the school district, but just trying to further clarify some communication aspects and just how incidents are reported. The proposed agreement continues the program till June 30th. The school board is also planning to vote on this amendment, agreement tonight at their school board meeting, and staff recommends approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the Verona Area School District to continue the PSLO program at the high school. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments, motions? Anyone want to crack at a motion? Alder Touche?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement to continue the police school liaison officer program.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Touche?
Let's keep it going.
Yeah. If I might add, I think it's great to have more communication with the school district, and I think the incident reporting will improve things. This is, of course, a living document, well, not a living document, it's a contract, but I expect over time, the program will morph and change, and I would definitely encourage staff to reach out to myself or city council members if there's things and ways we could improve the program. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of an intergovernmental agreement to continue the police school liaison officer program signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Next, we have 11B, which is approval of operator licenses. Clerk Clark.
Thank you. I need a motion, please, to approve operator licenses as presented by the city clerk.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. We are on item 12, Adjournment.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are adjourned at 7:22 PM. Thank you.